Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry. Nancy Alsop.
Here.
Brittany Wilson.
Here.
David Thompson.
Here.
Brad Anderson.
Here.
Vicky Wager. Steve Ellis.
Here.
Thank you. Communications from elected officials, other officials, or agencies of the county. Councilman Ellis?
Randy Gentry had sent a message in or a memo in to be read into the minutes. His statement is as follows: With a pending court hearing scheduled for 11:14, a court hearing at my request, my meaning Randy's, I continue to fear for the safety of my family and me 24 hours a day, seven days a week, while the Sheriff Department and Sheriff Fell have been kind in offering additional security for me during any meeting, again, anytime I say me, I'm referring to him. Any meeting I attend, the tax, at the taxpayer cost of such a request is, for a non-voting council sunshine meeting is not justified. Even with additional security, I'm not sure I would be comfortable to attend. I'm notifying you that I will not be at the sunshine meeting this evening, but will actively watch the hearing live. After the threats that were made against me after the last meeting by the council president, my personal safety must take precedence. Violence and threats of violence are never acceptable, but one council member threatening another is beyond reasonable. All coun, all council members have to feel safe to speak, make decisions, and discuss matters without the fear of violence or retribution. I thank everyone for their understanding during this difficult time. My best, Randy Gentry.
Rob, you have something?
I do. Good evening, Rob Roberts, Chief Deputy Prosecutor. May I approach? Sure. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
What I've just provided you is just a spreadsheet where I'm comparing the 2025 salary ordinance with the proposed 2026 salary ordinance for deputy prosecutor salaries. And just ultimately hoping for some clarification. It's my understanding that there may be another budget meeting taking place this week, and we would hope to have an opportunity to come and ask about that. But the, the primary concerns that Mr. Modestet and I had in reviewing this is the 2025 salary ordinance did have seven high felony deputy prosecutors positions. It appears that one of those has been reduced to a low-level felony prosecutor position. For those of you that are familiar with the court system, we, Charles Ray was a deputy prosecutor with our office. He was promoted to a magistrate position as of July 1 of this year, and he was one of our high felony deputy prosecutors. That's the open spot that's currently been open since that time that we have been trying to fill. And so we're wondering why that got bumped down. And then also, it appears that the base salary for the deputy prosecutors is receiving a 3% raise as proposed, but the trial deputies and the city court deputy positions are not receiving any increase at all. And so we're hoping to understand why that is the proposal and why they wouldn't be getting the same 3%, given that doesn't quite cover the increases of cost of living, but we understand the challenges that the county is facing. So that's why I just provided that to you, and hopefully there can be some additional communications on that. So as I've said many, many times during this time period, I don't want your jobs. Thank you for all you do on the budgeting process, and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Morse, County Commissioner. Since how you guys funded a few of these things, I'd like to bring you up to date. Hasselburger Bridge should be completed by next, sometime next week. That was an American Rescue and Recovery money job. Culverts were allocated, should be finished up yet this year. Paving and roads is pretty well done for the year. Chip and seal, just a little bit fogging left to do, and that'll be completed. I was informed today that the DNR approved the agreement with the city and the county for the Riley Trail, so we should be able to get our money from that grant that we got. We're preparing for winter jobs and getting the equipment ready for that. Crack and seal and lane striping will continue as long as the weather permits.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, we will move to reports from committees. We will get to that momentarily. Resolutions and ordinances other than appropriations. The first item is a voting item for us, approving Sealyville 2026 Civil Town Budget. It's page six of our booklet. And Michael, if I'm correct, this is no changes? This is just something that needs to be done?
Yes, so if you recall, this was... Yes, Mr. President, if you recall, this was an issue that we had gotten some information related to towards the end of last week, believing that the approval that was planned for the special meeting was not necessary. And we did get confirmation from the DLGF that because of some technicality that the approval that was advertised needed to be carried through, and there is no discretion on your part in terms, in, no discretion on the council's part in terms of any modification to the budget that was adopted by the town board of Sealyville, but they, the DLGF has granted an extension from the normal October 31st, Jan, November 1st deadline, and this approval needs to be hopefully done tonight, so.
Thank you. Questions from council? Hearing none. I will take a motion.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilwoman Wager. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just to clarify, do we not need to do that individually? I know last time there was a question. Are we good?
I think we're fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Ordinances adopting 2026 Vigo County, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies. We've got several of these in our agenda. They are B through, it looks like K. Do we need to go through these individually?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll touch on them each, Mr. President. So these salary ordinances are the product of the hard work that the Budget Committee and the Auditor's Office and all the department heads undertook with regards to the 2026 budget, and the first ordinance that is up is in regards to the the general employee salary ordinance. The modifications were just changing the year, changing the salaries as they were adjusted by the Budget Committee and inserting those into the 144s and the forms that you have before you. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the general employee salary ordinance. If there are no questions, I'll move down to the merit officers.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Michael?
The next ordinance that you have before you is an ordinance adopting a schedule and compensation policies of the merit officers of the Vigo County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Fell came in, met with the Budget Committee with his administration, and the ordinance was again modified to reflect the appropriate dates, and beyond that, there were no substantial modifications.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Number, D is on page 26.
Yes. So the next item is the scheduling compensation of the prosecutors and public defenders. With regards to the comments that Mr. Roberts made initially, I helped in the preparation of these. If that, you know, that six was not meant, the seven was not meant to change back to a six. In terms of notes that I got from the Budget Committee, it could have just been an earlier version of the ordinance that I pulled to draft into 2026's proposal. So that is on me, and again, Prosecutor Modestet, Chief Public Defender Athleen came in, met with the Budget Committee, went through the changes that they were proposing for next year's budget, and the dates have been updated. The proposed salaries have been reflected to approve what was, what came out of the Budget Committee meetings.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Page 30.
Again, the schedule and compensation policies for Vigo County Highway employees. Dates were modified to reflect the new year. The charts were changed to reflect the appropriate salary changes. There was no change in the kind of classification pays that come along with the various positions. No change in the mechanics tool allowance. The yeah, beyond the normal modifications, there were no substantive changes.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Dispatch E-911, page 36 of our booklet.
Yes, so with regards to Dispatch E-911, that was something that Devon noted coming out of the Budget Committee. Some additional language was inserted on the E-911 scheduling compensation policies for kind of a probationary period for people coming into that dispatch position to give the department head a little more discretion in terms of gauging a person's ability to perform that job. It is a high-stress job. Oftentimes, dealing with, you know, multiple serious issues at the same time, directing emergency personnel, and it, and it takes a certain type of person to, to do it and to be reliable in it. And I think it was, you know, I assume something that came about after consultation with the commissioners. So that was the one note I would make to their proposed salary ordinance. Beyond that, the normal modifications were made, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Correctional detention building security officers, page 42.
So this is the salary ordinance related to the correctional detention building security officers that serve in the courts, this building, the jail, community corrections, all of the various facilities that require security on behalf of Vigo County. Again, the normal modifications were made, the per-hour wages were updated to the levels that came out of the Budget Committee meetings. Beyond that, there were no substantive modifications to the salary ordinance.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Next is Parks Department, page 49.
Again, this is a salary ordinance with regards to the Vigo County Parks Department employees. It was modified to reflect the appropriate year, update the per-hour rate for part-time employees, and the proposed increases that came out of the Budget Committee for full-time department employees. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Health Department, page 54.
This is a schedule and compensation policies for the Vigo County Health Department. The Health Department, you know, has a number of different divisions that serve the people of Vigo County, and those necessary modifications were made to the salary ordinance to reflect the appropriate year and change the charts associated with the salaries that go along with those positions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Next is elected officials, page 59.
Again, this is your salary ordinance for all elected officials. Provides the parameters for pay for all the elected positions in Vigo County. We've got, you know, there's not a chart that goes along with this one. You can see the numbers associated with the positions just on the first and second page of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Looks like the last one is courts, page 62.
Yes.
Is that an insert?
Yeah, yes. So this is a, a modified salary ordinance that reflects some of the provisions that came out of the mandate. They I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, but, you know, it is a new version of a any salary ordinance that has been adopted previously based on that. Based on that action.
Thank you.
But it does the same thing that every other salary ordinance does, establishes the parameters by which the court employees can be compensated, and, and that's, that's what's required, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. You have a comment, Councilman Anderson?
As we know, when we got into, to the budget session in '24, the budget was already set for '25. Additional appropriations, they hired three new deputies that were not funded. We had a judge's mandate that was not in the budget for '25. Retirement for the Sheriff's Department was some increase. Insurance is all increased, and they also created a new court. So that, that's why our budget is higher this year. Plus, we know that our employees are probably one of our biggest assets that we have in this county, and we had moved several of them to midpoint, and now this council asked, I think everybody on this council said we want to get all the employees to midpoint, so that's, that's what we're doing and have done. But we had a lot of unfunded things that weren't in the budget for '25, so they had to go in the '26 budget. So we do have an increase, some, but we want to make sure our employees, and we also opened up group homes again, and those, those were not all of it funded, so, but it's important. We have that, the group homes for the kids and stuff that need that, and so we do have a little higher budget than we actually wanted to do, but we came in well, well below the advertised budget of about $18 million less, so. Lot of tough decisions go into this, but like I said, our assets in this community are our employees that we have, and we appreciate them.
Thank you. Moving on to I on our agenda book, Resolutions and reallocations of existing appropriations, 2025-8, adult probation. Page 63. Commercial shredder purchase?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Leigh Ann Reasonbeck, Chief Probation Officer. I'm requesting that remaining funds from some of our 300-series line items be transferred to 400-series to allow us to purchase a commercial shredder. Unfortunately, due to budget cuts, we had been utilizing a shredder from community corrections, but that had to be removed, so we're going to purchase a commercial shredder. We, we handle a lot of confidential documents in our office. We prepare about 90 pre-sentence investigation reports every quarter. With those, we receive psychiatric records, medical records, so we deal with a large amount of shredding. So this purchase would allow us to, to get a commercial-grade shredder. The juvenile court currently has the same shredder, and it's lasted them 10 years with no maintenance issues, so we know it's a good product that should last us a while. Any questions?
Is that a lease or a purchase?
Purchase.
Purchase that, okay.
Other questions from council? Thank you. Ordinances relating to appropriations. Additional appropriation, 2025-54, Sheriff's Office Jail Medical Costs, page 65.
Good evening, council. Sheriff Derek Fell. As you are aware, we are making a request for $190,000 to cover our jail medical costs to help us get through the end of the year. We had conversations with the council earlier this year, I think Mayor June. We kind of predicted that we were going to be short before the end of the year came, and here we are. I had submitted a request for $190,000 probably five, six weeks ago. At that time, that's kind of the number we were hoping we were going to stay under. That number actually is going to be about $315,000. I understand that with the $190,000 ask that was submitted, that's the amount that was advertised, that's the amount we can ask for this evening. What our course of action is going to be, we basically have two options. Request, obviously, the full $190,000 for, for tonight. That's going to get us through the end of November. We're going to receive our final bill of the year, or invoice of the year December 31st. We don't know exactly what that figure is going to be, and just to kind of touch base and go into a little bit of detail, medical costs in the jail is something that you can't fully predict. We don't know who's going to be brought in tomorrow. We can't predict if someone's going to have a major medical procedure tomorrow, next week, next month. People may not get medical care when they're out in the community, but when they come into the jail, we are required by law to give them that medical care, prescriptions, healthcare, et cetera. So while we do our best, and typically, we don't have to come ask for additional funds in terms of jail medical, this year we are. So with that being said, with the $190,000, again, that's going to get us through November and probably going to have a few thousand dollars left over, which we would then apply to December. Again, our two options are, one, come back in December with a, with a solid figure and ask for a little bit of additional funds there, or we will have a conversation with our medical provider. There would not be, to my understanding, there would not be a penalty if we were to receive our invoice December 31st, make that payment January 5th hypothetically, out of the 2026 budget. Of course, with that being said, we don't know for sure in November of next year what our jail medical is going to be and what those, what those costs are going to end up being, so I can't make any guarantees. We don't have to come back next year and ask for additional jail medical funding. So that's what the ask is. If you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Questions from council?
I have a question. Can we go ahead and increase that amount?
Well, I, I was just talking with Judy, and I'd gotten a message from Sheriff Fell and responded to him. And in answering Derek's question, I did not realize that this, in fact, has been advertised out of three different budgets, each of them for $190,000. So there is an appropriation level there to support whatever, I mean, in theory, there's $570,000 of appropriation there to approve out of those three line. So you can, you could approve the entirety of what he needs for 2025, and I just did not realize that that's the way it had been advertised, so.
Are tho, are those appropriations coming to us?
They're before you tonight.
All three?
Yes.
Okay.
Which, just to be clear, we do not need $570,000.
I understand.
We can give some of it back. I was just thinking, coming out of this year's budget, with an additional appropriation, we better than taking it out of next year's budget, not knowing how much we're going to lose in tax.
Absolutely, and I, and I don't want to get into that, you know, in personal life or work life. I don't want to get into the, the idea of paying late, by all means, so I don't want to start that, that process, but it, it is an option. It's not something I would want to use repeatedly, that's for sure.
What funds were they advertised in?
Contractual services, or general fund, lit correctional rehab, and juvenile justice center, non-revert.
Well, whatever the council decides, but I, like I said, if we can get it out of this, this year's budget as an additional appropriation, it would probably be much better for us, not knowing what our future is.
And tomorrow, next year may be a better healthcare year. We just, again, we can't predict that.
Yeah, never know.
Councilwoman Wilson?
And this, this may be ignorance, but from an accounting standpoint, is it, is it okay to pay a bill next, with next year's budget for things that were incurred this year? You can, you can carry it over like that, not have a problem?
To my understanding, it is. I mean, if you, if you encumber it, I don't think there's a problem with that. We don't, we wouldn't receive, it's not due till December 31st, so again, I don't think they would have a problem with that. I don't see that there's an issue.
I, I would think you would prefer to pay it like, like
We would much rather pay it this year, out of this year's budget, yes.
Thank you.
Can this be paid out of juvenile justice, non-reverting?
I mean, there certainly, I, at least I, I presume there is some portion of that bill related to medical costs at the juvenile center. My understanding, you know, but one entity does both facilities, so yes.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Additional appropriation, 2025-55, Vigo County Engineering, Roads Salt and Equipment Repair, page 66 of our booklet.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Alvin, Vigo County Engineer and Highway Director. Last year was a significant, what I would call a significant year for us weather-wise. We had a few, not a large events, but a lot of smaller events strung out. So, that kind of depleted our road salt inventory. That being said, my superintendent got a little uneasy about our salt supply going into, particularly this December. So, he ordered salt in September. They usually take a couple of months to get it to us. They actually brought it at the end of the month with the bill, so we have the bill for that. So, my proposal is to use, is that hundred and forty thousand, I'm asking for road salt. I could ask for the additional appropriation and then just decrease my request next year, my budget line next year, to offset that request for this year. So, I maintain that cash balance. As you know, local road and street is particularly funded by fuel tax, fuel revenue from that, so keeping that cash balance where we need it in order to fund that budget going forward is important. So, it's something I monitor fairly closely. I will note that the local, local road revenue this year is up two-point-three percent versus last year's revenue. But that being said, we all, we keep hearing from the state how that's going to decrease in years to come. So, keeping that cash balance now is important. So, that is a proposal I have. I offset the request this year with decreasing the amount for next year. Normally, what we do is we wait until January, order the salt, have it delivered then. But this, that being said, we were pretty low on reserves this year, so this did fill the domes up. We are ready to go for that.
Did the salt go up?
Salt did go up a little bit, but not a whole lot.
Gas prices have, so you should get more tax on that.
Yep, yep. So, the second request from that is also repair equipment. This year has kind of been a perfect storm for things that we've had breaking down. The one thing that we really haven't, I've strived to replace a lot of the, a lot of the equipment that we've had over the last few years, but the one thing that I haven't really got to focus on yet is our mowers and our boom mowers, in particular. We had one that went down last winter. We had it up at John Deere to get replaced. That was a fifty-two thousand dollar repair just in itself. We only had two hundred and fifty thousand to get us through the whole year, so that kind of depleted us right off the bat. They also kept that thing for about six months. We didn't get it back till middle of the summer, and then, of course, we get the bill the next month, and it was fifty-two thousand. So, we didn't really anticipate it being that high, but they did have to split the entire tractor to rebuild the transmission. So, in hindsight, wish I'd just scrapped it and bought a new tractor, but they had already committed to that and didn't really communicate that. So, we're addressing as we go forward. We also had two Kubota tractors, tractors, add transmissions go down at about fourteen thousand apiece. So, that added to some of our costs for that. So, that fifty thousand dollars is a request to get us through the last two months of the year. Obviously, if I don't use that, you know, we will keep that in there, but we really need to make sure we have those funds to get tires on some of the trucks and make sure all the snow and equipment is ready for the winter. So, that's really our goal, right time this year, is winter prep, and make sure we get all that ready to go. So, we want to make sure we have those funds available. If we don't use it, you know, it will go back in the cash balance.
Do you have a balance in that right now?
Repair equipment?
No, in local road and street.
Yes, right now, well, I don't know the exact cash balance at this point, but at any balance, I calculated we have about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand left, and that's if I spent every dime of this year's budget. County with next year's revenue, we had a couple increases that we requested, which the salt will kind of offset that. But next year, we would have ended if, again, if we spent every dime, we would end at seven hundred and ninety-four thousand. So, this would deplete that cash balance a little bit, and that would be something that would focus on next budget cycle to help shore that back up. But that would keep us above five hundred thousand, which should, or six hundred thousand, which would be half of our budget for the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional appropriation, 2025-56, Commissioners Casino Riverboat Wagering Revenue Request, page sixty-seven of our booklet.
Good evening, President Thompson, members of the council. Mark Clinkenbeard, President of Vigo County Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight on this important issue. Before I get started with our presentation, I wanted to first take a moment to thank all of you for your sacrifice and service to our community. Until I became elected official, I never really appreciated the sacrifice as made to a job like yours and mine. On the one hand, it's one of the greatest responsibilities I've ever had the pleasure of doing. On the other hand, it's a job that comes with immense pressure and the realization that we can't please everyone. We can only do our best and what we feel is right for the future of our community. I'm getting ready to finish my third year on the job, and while we have not always agreed on everything, we have all worked together to complete projects that are a huge benefit to the county. Together, we have tackled the housing crisis. We have worked together to bring more quality childcare options to the community. Earlier this year, we reopened and reinvested in our group homes for children. We have worked together to bring in new businesses like Intech and Zinc Power. We have paved more roads and built bridges, and we have addressed quality-of-life projects with improvements to Griffin Bike Park, the Riley Spur Trail, and Dewey Point, to name a few. And one of my favorite things we have accomplished together was the relocation of nine-one-one dispatch from the dungeon of the old jail to a new state-of-the-art facility at First and Ohio. Tonight, I am hopeful that we once again work together to help solve one of the most pressing challenges, challenging issues facing the Vigo County community, our high schools. Over the last few weeks, we have seen spirited debate and good questions asked. While it may be ugly at times, I believe in the long run, we will once again come together to do what's best for the citizens of Vigo County. Tonight, as President of the Vigo County Commissioners and on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, Chris Switzer and Mike Morris, we are asking for this council's partnership in moving Tonight, the Vigo County Commissioners are making a formal request to the County Council to establish an oversight board. The purpose of this board is to evaluate funding solutions for school facility improvements in a transparent and accountable way. This is the next step towards ensuring that any future proposal for our schools is responsible, feasible, and publicly vetted. This request moves us from discussion to action. The Oversight Board is not a decision-making body, it's a fact-finding and recommendation tool to guide future decisions. The one hundred thousand dollar investment ensures this work is supported by credible data and professional expertise, not assumptions or politics. At our last meeting, we laid the foundation, explaining what the Oversight Board is and why it's necessary. We heard from Senator Gray Good, who authored the legislation about the intent behind HB fifteen fifteen, and outlined the boundaries of what this board can and cannot do. Tonight, we're asking for the formal structure and the resources to let that work begin. Why this, why an Oversight Board is critical. This isn't about creating another layer of government, it's about creating a framework for transparency and expertise. The Oversight Board will ensure that any proposed funding solution is vetted, legal, and fiscally sound. Most importantly, it ensures the public sees the process as trustworthy and inclusive. At this time, I would invite Kristen Craig, President and CEO of the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce, to come and speak.
Good evening, and thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to share some information. I'm going to speak this evening about the economic impact of population loss. We all understand these initial points on the screen about why education is important. I doubt there's much debate that strong schools create strong community, which in turn create a strong business environment. But to provide additional context to these truths, my team has put together some numbers that help bring dollar science to this discussion. So, next slide. Here is a scenario where a family chooses to leave Terre Haute, Vigo County. A few assumptions. Let's say that it's a family of four, two parents, two children. Let's assume the parents are thirty years old. Let's also assume the children are under the age of eighteen. A few more assumptions. The family moves away from Vigo County and does not return. The parents remain in the workforce until age sixty-five in another community. And let's also say the children and their future spouses work from ages twenty to sixty-five. And let's use Vigo County's average life expectancy and median household income for the multiplying factors. So, if you consider their total economic impact over the course of their lives and their children's lives, it's easily six million dollars in lost economic opportunity for our community when this family leaves. That includes lost property taxes, lost food and beverage tax, lost revenue for the schools, lost support for local businesses, lost childcare spending, lost donations to local known profits, and the list goes on and on and on. And although we have made progress in terms of slowing population loss, based on our calculations, about six hundred families with children move away from Vigo County each year. While this figure doesn't account for families moving in, it does highlight that families are making decisions today, many of which are influenced by the school facilities. Using the same formula that I mentioned earlier and applying the generational impact I discussed, these six hundred families we are losing each year represent nearly three-point-six billion in potential economic loss. Every year, we are unable to find a solution to our schools, that loss grows even larger. So, the next slide, to either even further illustrate the point, what does this equation mean when applied to a lost economic development opportunity? Let's say this family never came here, as the employer they were to work for chose to locate their new facility in a different community. There's a few projects that I have been involved with that eventually hinged on the schools. An example from a few years ago, around the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one era, was the F-35 Training Program that involved the Hundred-and-eighty-First Intelligence Wing and the Terre Haute Regional Airport. This could have resulted in over a thousand new jobs with an average salary of eighty-two thousand a year. Ultimately, Terre Haute was not chosen for a variety of reasons, but in large part because of the inadequacy of the school facilities and the concern that the project managers had around recruiting top-tier talent to move their families here. So, the math here is easy and frightening. Over a thousand jobs, over a thousand families, which based on the formula that I just described, easily totals a lost economic opportunity of over ten billion dollars. That's a huge loss to our community, and this is just one project, just one. So, this illustrates why it's not just a school problem, it's a community problem that we all play a role in. The Chamber, we have an obligation to create a business-friendly environment free of obstacles to growth and progress. And as the fiscal entity for the county, you have an obligation to ensure its financial health. Declining population and the subsequent loss of property taxes is a challenge that unfortunately we must face together. Tough problems require tough solution, and that's why I'm here today, asking for your help. The Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce, representing the voice of more than six hundred businesses, strongly supports the creation of an independent Oversight Board to help guide this critical first step in the Vigo County School Consolidation Plan. I recognize there are differing views about how to move forward, and that's exactly why an Oversight Board is needed. Our community needs a trusted, transparent structure that can examine all options, evaluate funding sources, bring facts to the forefront, and rebuild public confidence in the decision-making process. This board also plays a key role in ensuring financial responsibility for the taxpayers, including local businesses. To simply push for a facilities referendum without allowing this board to examine other funding options and resources already available is just a waste of our community's resources. Today, we have an opportunity to take the first step in solving this problem together in a way that makes sense for our community. Thank you.
Over the last couple of weeks, there have been concerns raised about the language of House Bill fifteen fifteen, specifically if forming this committee would give the school corporation a blank check. To address those and other concerns, I'd like to introduce Jewel Lee, Partner at Taft Law and Head of the Firm's Municipal Group. Jewel has been engaged in this area and given his specialized expertise in state and municipal law. We reached out and asked him to provide legal insight regarding the House Bill fifteen fifteen and how it applies to the creation of an Oversight Board. He has graciously agreed to do so in kind. As Head of Taft's Municipal Group, Jewel works closely with government, local governments, and legislators across Indiana to address municipal challenges and advance effective policy solutions. He serves on the Board of Directors for Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, has chaired their corporate advisory council, and is an active member of both the Indiana Municipal Lawyers' Association and the National Association of Bond Lawyers. His extensive experience with municipal governance and legislative collaboration makes him well-qualified to speak to the legal framework surrounding this project, this process. And I would just want to note that as Jewel comes up here to speak, feel free to go ahead and ask him questions. The Commissioners will be available for questions after that. I just thought it would work out best if you asked him any legal questions while he's up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clinkenbeard. That's the nicest introduction I think I've ever received in front of anybody. As the Commissioner said, my name is Jewel Lee, and, you know, I rose before this council at the last meeting. I indicated that my address is four-four-nine-nine Majestic Oak Court, Westfield, Indiana, because my wife and I just recently moved out of Vigo County. We, for a long time, were at three-eight-three-six Ironwood Lane, Terre Haute, Indiana. And if you ask my wife and my children, Terre Haute is still home, and that's why this is important to us. Now, a couple of weeks ago, I think, I was contacted by the media and asked a question regarding this piece of legislation, and whether or not the formation of the Oversight Committee would result in a blank check or an open checkbook, unfettered access to county funding. And my position when reading that statute is, no, it will not. And the reason why I say that is because you have to read the statute in whole. The Indiana courts have come out time and time again, talking about how do we read and interpret statutes? When you interpret a statute, you've got to follow the rules of statutory construction. You cannot just read one section, you cannot just read one phrase, you cannot just read one word and put all the weight upon that. You have to read them all together and try to make everything harmonize. And so, when you look at that, and the entire structure of this chapter, it surrounds the creation of this body, right, this Oversight Committee. When you look at Section Five, that Oversight Committee is very much limited in what they're able to do. While it says it is the powers and duties of that committee, it really is a restricting language. It says it is only the oversight and management of the funds that this council transfers to the school corporation or gifts to the school corporation. That is the extent of the powers in which this commission exists. They cannot obligate funds for the county, they cannot appropriate dollars for the county, they cannot, if you read this statute, enter into contracts on behalf of the county. Their job is the oversight and management of funds that this body gifts or transfers to the school corporation for a project. Now, that raises and begs a lot of questions. Well, how does that work? Well, it is a process in which there will be some feeling out of how this will work. This is the first time anything has been enacted in Indiana code, and it applies here to Vigo County. It is an opportunity to address a situation in Vigo County where other communities haven't had that issue, because referendums have been passed, which result in taxes that go outside of the tax caps. So, outside of the tax levies, there is this additional tax for those referendums. Referendums have been proposed in Vigo County, and I, you know, I lived here during one of them, and they didn't, did not pass. So, you're left trying to face another solution as to how to assist and help the school corporation address a need that is truly a need, I think everybody would agree with that, without having the impact upon the taxpayers. And this is one of those avenues that was created. I know that there's some consternation regarding some of the language, and I can tell you for, in full transparency, that Councilman Gentry called me, and we had a discussion on Friday for about two hours regarding this legislation. And we talked about several different issues that he had, and one of the questions that he wanted me to answer, if I could, was, as it applies to Section Three, subsection G. This is a subsection that says that the county shall pay for the expenses of the commission, right? Again, if I read subsection G by itself and alone, it makes it look like the county's going to have to pay any bill that this commission decides to rack up. But when you read it in its entirety, it's what is tied to the powers of this commission? If there is a bill that is tied to the oversight and management of the funds that you have decided to transfer over to the school corporation, then yes, that is something that I believe this council would have to approve and pay, because that is within the powers of the commission, the oversight and management of the funds that you have provided or transferred or gifted. If it does not tie to that, so it's not tied... If it does not tie to that, so if it's not tied to the oversight and management of the funds that have been transferred or gifted to the school corporation, then it is not an expense of this commission, in my opinion, because they are acting outside of its statutory boundaries and outside of what they are supposed to do. They are this body, and I said this at the last council meeting, I was restricted by time then, and I have a little bit more, so I'll go into it a little bit greater detail. In dealing with this unique situation, we've heard the word transparency again and again, and it only makes sense, like I could say transparency all I want, that doesn't make something transparent. It only makes sense when you talk about what the true transparency is. So what transparency are we talking about with the creation of this committee and the powers this committee has? Well, the financials are still within the control of this council. You are the fiscal body of Vigo County. The transparency comes into play when we talk about the improvements that are going to be done to the school corporation. Normally, in a situation in which a referendum is passed in a school, a different district, that school corporation has its own committees that they will work through, create a plan, and put it out there and implement it with the referendum money that is collected. And the school corporation is the only body that has any say in what that project's going to be. That is not the situation that is created with this legislation. With this legislation, this council has the opportunity to make an appointment to the body. The commissioners have an opportunity to make an appointment to the body. The city of Terre Haute has an opportunity to make an appointment to that body, and then the Chamber of Commerce does as well. The fifth member of that body is going to be the superintendent of the school corporation. So now, in and of itself, you have four other entities that are having a say at the table to what this project is going to look like. I can tell you, and I'm sure the superintendent may not like this comment that I make, I know that they have provided a plan that has been proposed as a potential solution. That very well may not be a plan that this body agrees with, this Oversight Committee. It may be something completely different, and I can tell you that I've heard questions about it. When I, after the interview aired, I had some calls and questions from still many of my friends in this community, many of them who own a lot of property, who are in the farming industry, who are in the business industry. And they asked me a simple question, and they said, "Does this school corporation plan that has been presented, is that what we are funding if we go forward?" And my answer to them was possibly, but it doesn't have to be. It depends upon what the recommendation of the body is and whether or not the council accepts that recommendation of how to move forward. Those monies, that oversight and management of the monies that you provide are going to be the say that the community has in this school project. Again, it is different than any other school corporation in the state of Indiana that we have seen because of that. I said this at South High again, when you make your appointments, if you move forward with this, I strongly recommend you have true members of the community that are taxpayers. Be thoughtful of who you appoint. Appoint a member of the farming community, appoint a member of the business community. Don't just have elected officials there, because you're already sitting in these seats. You can go ahead and do it if you want to. This is just another avenue that adds that transparency. When you add the layers of this community that come in, that are able to participate, that are able to ask questions, that are able to raise issues, more information, better information, better opportunities, better solutions are going to be made available for consideration in moving forward. So those are the things that I would recommend. I hope I answered Councilman Gentry's question regarding Section 3, subsection G. But as Commissioner Klinkenbeard said, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Councilman Ellis?
I'm happy to go last if somebody else wants to go first.
Okay, go for it.
First, thank you very much for caring enough to make the trips over. I don't know that anybody relayed this to you, but those of us that were not in attendance, we did watch you speak as well, and thank you for that as well, at Terre Haute South. One of the things I noticed that you said repeatedly just now, and I appreciate that you said it, was, in my opinion...
Correct.
Why not say, "in fact"? Why is it not fact?
It's a semantic, but there's interpretation of statutes. I can read a statute, and I can come up with an interpretation of that statute, and that is my opinion. That's a fact of the legal world. Somebody else can read a statute, and they can say and come up with a different opinion, and that is their opinion. It doesn't become a fact, and it will never become a fact, because a fact is, this is paper, that is a TV. It is these sorts of truly factual basis that its facts are, that that word is, doesn't apply essentially to an opinion.
Okay. I had a meeting with Mr. Klinkenbeard earlier, he had told me that you were going to be speaking, so I wrote down some questions that I had for you that I thought you might be able to help clarify.
I will do my best.
Fair enough. Where in it, where in this bill does it put restrictions or limitations on the committee and what they can commit to?
I think it comes into Section 5.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so when you look at Section 5 of this chapter, it specifically says that this commission has a power for oversight and management of the funds that the county transfers or gives to a school corporation. That is the power that they have. They only have the power that is gifted to them or granted to them by statute. There's no other granting authority, power vesting in that entire chapter. And so that, while they say it's the powers, and that's what I meant by this is kind of the limiting thing, everything is limited to the oversight and management of funds that the county gifts or transfers to the school corporation.
Can I ask for clarification on that one point?
Sure, go ahead.
For a particular project, correct?
For the...
The money that we gave, we give to the, give or gift to the corporation for a particular project.
Right, so that is, anything that's tied to a transfer or gift under this chapter.
Okay. Okay.
Councilman Ellis?
Thank you.
All right, so hypothetically, this committee goes out and they commit to doing soil samples or some sort of study, or they have expenses that are above and beyond what we would have And whoever they went and entered that contract with says, "You're paying us." And we say, "Hey, no, we don't have to, we didn't okay that." What's to stop them from suing us? How do we prevent ourselves from getting into litigation over this law that seems to be written in a rather ambiguous manner? So there's, it's open to interpretation. I've probably heard four interpretations, one being from my brother, one being from you, and I've heard three others, because I, I'm not going to take my brother's word for it, I'm not going to take your word for it, so I went to other independent people as well. And I got five different interpretations. I've heard yours, I've heard my brother's, I've heard three others now, which means if they go and they spend money and we are responsible for them, kind of like somebody comes and works on my house, and they go to Lowe's and they purchase $100,000 worth of materials, and I don't, I've never stepped in foot, or I've never walked into Lowe's, I've never done anything with Lowe's, I had nothing to do with it, but that's where they bought their products. They come and they put them in my home, and the next thing I know, I'm getting sued from Lowe's with a mechanic's lien because I have products in my home that weren't paid for, even though I don't have a contract with Lowe's. And I think there's probably, I'm not an attorney, my dad wanted me to go, but I didn't go.
You're the smart one of the family.
What's that?
I said you were the smart one of the family.
But I think there's probably case law or precedent or whatever you call it that would show that Lowe's is probably going to win that. And so why would we put ourselves in a position that sets us up for failure when we can establish, instead of us financing this, I don't think there's a person up here that's against seeing something happen with schools. I think we're all on the same page. I don't think there's a person up here that's against a committee going and doing that. I think where you have people that are a little bit concerned up here is the power that this committee has and the potential issues it could put us in. And so rather than to put ourselves into that position, one suggestion I had, and I mentioned it to Mr. Klinkenbeard or Commissioner Klinkenbeard today, the casino wants to give them $100,000 from their, not from their tax fund, but from their donation fund. The commissioners can still form this exact same committee, and they can still do the exact same work, and they can still come and present back to us, and we could overturn the ordinance that we passed. All that can still be done. Why is there this urgency to pass the thought of us giving them a dollar or whatever it is, because that's, at this point, I've been asked, "Hey, would you just give us a dollar, and they'll get the money from somewhere else?" It's not the money, and the casino has said they'd give them the money, so the money's not the issue. Why would we put ourselves in a compromising position when the same work can be done without putting ourselves in a compromising position? Go ahead.
Okay. There's a lot there.
Sorry.
So I will do my best to answer it. First of all, I can tell you, any lawyer who gets up here to say, "Is there a way to keep somebody from suing me?", and they say yes, is lying, because anybody can sue you for anything, period. Doesn't have to be based in fact, there are cases that get dismissed all the time. And the burden to dismiss a case on its face is very high, where there's no reading of the law applied to the undisputed facts would result in a win, right? So I can't stand here and tell you that you can't be sued. What I can stand here and tell you is this, I am not sure, in the hypothetical that you provided, of going out and drilling to see a brownfield information. For me, you're talking about environmental expert at that point, so you're talking about an environmental consultant coming out there to take these studies and do these samplings. I do not, in my opinion again, and the way that I read this statute, I do not see how that is in the oversight and management of funds that this council gives to the school corporation. That is underlying studies that I would assume that the school corporation has done in connection with its process of coming up with a plan. When we talk about some other things, I know one thing that has been talked about is a, the financial study, right? And I would tell you, if you were one of my clients and you were asking me what that first step is, it's you need to get an MA, a municipal advisor or an FA, a financial advisor, they're one and the same usually, under contract to do an analysis to see what the capacity as a county is without impacting tax rates, what other capital stacks exist, whether that be through the school levies, whether that be through the casino funding, whether that be through other tax dollars that are available. What are the capital stacks that exist so that we can right-size a project if necessary, right? I could see expenses tied to that tied to this project. I don't see environmental, at this point, I don't see legal as being a...
We can take out the environmental out of the question. I'm just saying, expenses that they incur, why subject ourselves to that type of litigation or interpretation the way this, where it says "shall pay"? Rather than to subject ourselves to that, why would we not simply, the commissioners have the ability to set this committee up? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the commissioners have the ability to set the committee up. Why would we subject ourselves and our county to litigation? I know, I know anybody can sue for any reason, but this law is written in a rather...
I see where you're...
...undefined fashion, all right, where we are, at the very minimum, we're going to be defending ourselves. Why would we want to do that to ourselves when they can literally go do the exact same work with a committee and with money? They've got the money, they have the ability to form the committee, why do we need to be involved at this juncture?
So I see where your question is going, and I think it goes back to this. To reach that conclusion that you're afraid of, I think you have to assume that the committee members, that you as a council, that the commissioners, that the city, and the chamber select to put on that committee will be bad actors, right? It, because...
It would be silly not to assume that it could happen.
Well, I think whatever your assumption is, that has to be the underlying assumption, is that the people you appoint to those positions will be bad actors. Because without that, you're not going to get into a situation where contracts are executed like that without full buy-in from the appointing authorities. The second any appointed member does something improper, that appointing authority can remove them for cause, right? So I think it, your hypothetical pivots and is based upon that assumption. And if that's the assumption, then you're right. If it's, if you're going to appoint somebody who is not going to do the job that they are appointed to do, yeah, you're going to open yourself up to problems regardless, whether you put a penny into this thing or not. If you appoint, and the commissioners appoint, and the city appoints, and the chamber appoints good members of the citizenry who are going to take their jobs seriously and do what they're supposed to do, then I think that risk of, that your concern is de minimis at that point. Again, I cannot say nobody can sue.
Can you give me a, can you give me a legal reason why they could not follow the protocol that I just suggested by setting up their committee, financing it through the casino or any other means, and proceeding and then presenting to us thereby creating a level of insulation? Look, you work for a company, I assume, I work for, I own a company. We all have taken steps to insulate ourselves from any type of exposure. We would be idiots to not give ourselves a layer of protection here. It is very easy to do. We all want the same thing, we just don't agree on how to do it. There's no reason they cannot proceed forward with what they have access to right now today. Can you give me a legal reason why they shouldn't, not why they can't, not why they shouldn't, why they can't do that?
Okay, I'll try to give you two. First of all, when you look at this statute, the statute requires there to be a gift to the school corporation in order for this committee to be enacted.
Doesn't it say "may"?
What's that? They may create it after a gift or transfer is made. So they don't have to create a commission. That's where that "may" comes into play. Once a council or the county decides to transfer or gift any monies to the school corporation for a project, the commissioners then have the authority and power where they may, if they choose to, create a commission. Doesn't have to be that. So under that reading, what you're looking at is if you decide to gift $10 million, I'm just pulling a number here, for a project, commissioners can decide not to do anything, and then the school corp is then going to utilize that money how the school corp wants to utilize that money. This layer of protection that's put in is the commissioners have the ability that they may, if they want, and what I think I'm hearing from them is that they want to create this committee to create this border, because at that point, school corporation cannot just go do whatever they want. That body is oversight and management of all of the funds that are granted over. There's got to be some funding that happens to grant that power to commit. So that's the first part. The second part, and this is more of a practical application of this, the power of this committee for the oversight and management applies when money is provided and this committee is created. It ties back to that first part of if the commissioners decide not to create a committee, and you decide to gift or transfer funds to the school corporation, and the school corporation then acts by itself, this statute is the only thing that prevents the school corporation from taking those steps, from building whatever it is that they want with the taxpayer dollars. Only under this statute, once it's passed and once a committee is set up, does the oversight and management of all of those funds that are transferred move from the entity that it is gifted to, because that's the normal course. If I transfer money to my brother-in-law, or I gift him money, it's his money, and he can spend it however he wants. When you transfer money to the school corp, technically, it's their money, but what this legislation does is it adds a layer to say, "But you've got to meet the oversight..." oversight and management of this commission, if created.
So, I guess my, my concern there would be, you're making the assumption that you would have bad actors in the school corporation, if you can't trust them to do what they need to do.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
That's, that was the suggestion that you had when I said, when I said I may not trust the committee to do, to do the right thing. So, with your same logic, if we were to, if we were to apply that same logic to the school corporation and not give them funding, then it's because we, you must think that there could be bad actors there.
No, I'm saying that the school corporation, when a school corporation, and I appreciate your point, and the argument. If I can explain my position on this, the school corporation comes at things and looks at it with a different lens than other members of this community, okay? School corporation's going to see, what are the needs that we have to provide our students? What is the best way that we can provide those? What are the investments and where are we going to put them? I can tell you, the mindset of a farmer is very much different. That farmer's going to sit there and say, what are the needs of our students? What is a way to provide this without putting undue impact on people who own property? And farmers pay 2% on every acre that they have, right? What is the way to provide these services and to move the ball forward without doing some things? And a lot of it is common sense. So, I'm going to use the proposal that was planned by the school corporation, right? If there is no other oversight or management, there's a chance that that's what the school corporation would build. And it would suffice the school corporation to provide what the kids need for an education, right? I can tell you, I have friends who are farmers, who probably disagree with that plan, and don't want to see the plan that was provided by the school corporation being the one that is enacted with any of the taxpayer dollars. And the specific example that was given to me, which I can't refute or argue, is, this plan talks about the consolidation and construction of a brand-new high school. And it talks about taking Terre Haute South and Terre Haute North and renovating them to be middle schools. Yet the presumptive argument is that Terre Haute North and Terre Haute South aren't good enough for our high school students. So why would they then be good enough for our middle school students? I don't have an answer to that.
Sure.
Right? That's the argument that was proposed to me by friends of mine. And those are the types of questions that I think an oversight committee, made up of the people you appoint, would raise and bring, as opposed to just decisions being made on behalf of the school corporation.
So, once again, go ahead, you have a follow-up.
Pardon my voice, I had some surgery recently. You made a point that I think is very cogent, and that is, you know, why all elected officials? You know, what about like a farmer, a banker, educator, commissioner, attorney, chamber, student, a taxpayer, the taxpayers' association? I mean, what would, why not a stretch of folks like that?
Yeah, and I think that's what is allowable under the statute, right? It doesn't say a member of the council, it doesn't say a member of the commissioners or a member of the city council. It says, you are the appointing authority, and you get to choose from any resident of Vigo County. Now, you'll have to have a nomination, a vote, that kind of stuff, Mike would be able to walk you through that process, but you would select who the county council appointee is to that commission. The commissioners would go through the same process, where they would have to agree as to who their person would be. I'm not sure how the city was set up, I didn't spend time, I'm going to be honest with you, looking at that appointment issue, because I wasn't asked to opine on the city parts. But, my guess is the mayor would talk to their council and figure out who that appointment's going to be. And so, I think it's that cross-section that would serve the community the best, of having people from all of the different taxing entity areas representing this, this commission, and asking those questions that I was asked by friends of mine.
All right, stand by Steve. Go ahead. Councilwoman Wilson.
I just have one other question, to clarify what this committee or this board can and cannot do. Can they enter into a contract?
I don't see any power within this statute that gives them contracting authority.
That's what I thought too, which would have eliminated any concerns, I think, that Mr. Ellis had, as far as committing us to something that we are liable then for.
Right.
Okay, so I think the, the bigger question would be is, not can they, if they do inadvertently, are we then on the hook for that money? And I would say that, again, the law, going back to the law, it's written in such a broad way to interpretation, that we could be, again, I don't understand, we have the ability to set up this committee and not subject ourselves to litigation. We can, I wasn't even going to bring this up, but the yellow paper that you're all handling, and I don't necessarily, I'm not saying I even agree with that, but, that happens to be a corporation that my brother set up for them, to put all the same people on it that are on, it's a non-for-profit, puts all the same people on the committee, and allows them to proceed forward if they want, and he has no control over it, the commissioners control it. It just insulates us from any type of litigation, I'm not sure, people can still always sue, but we're at least a layer more, we're a layer back, and we have not put the dollar or the penny towards it, that opens us up to that type of litigation. Why would we want to subject ourselves to that type of, those types of issues? Well, I mean, we're already getting sued from a number of sources as it is as a county. Why would we, why would we willingly walk into something that opens us up for more litigation?
Two points on that. First of all, when, I think you said it's a not-for-profit, the yellow piece?
Right, but that or them setting up their own, or whatever it is, it could be anything. I was just using it as an example because it was sitting there.
So, so the first thing that you're going to have is, for the school to move forward with a project, if you're going to have this entity or whatever oversee it, there's still going to have to be a transfer and a gift over to the school corporation of county tax dollars, right?
Say it one more time.
There will have to be a transfer or gift of county tax dollars to the school corporation.
For?
For a project.
For a project.
Right, for the school proj- that has to occur for anything else to pop up, right?
If, are you talking about for the committee or for a project?
No, I'm talking about for, so in order for this entity, whatever this entity is, to oversee or help when you have the appointment to everything, in order for them to move forward, in order for them to be a project, you as a council are going to have to transfer or gift funds to the school corporation.
Correct.
At that moment, you've already reached the threshold.
Right, I'm suggesting we don't do that.
Well, and then, then there's, so the, so your issue is, you don't want to give any money to the school corporation then?
Well, yeah, I thought you knew that, my apologies.
Okay, so that, that changes the analysis. If the analysis is, I don't want to provide any taxpayer dollars to the school corporation for this project, that is a completely different analysis as to this, this commission. When you talk about this commission, let's just say, because you said you don't want to open it up and possibly use this other entity to oversee it. In order for that other entity to oversee the monies, there has to be a transfer. Once there's a transfer, the statute kicks in, the commissioners can appoint their board, I mean, it, it happens. So the only way then, for, to avoid that, is to vote no, I do not want to give the school corporation any money on the project.
Okay, so now, if that's the case, why could they not still proceed forward, and still do their studies, and still bring a, a potential solution to this council? And then we then vote, once we see what they've come up with, and then we vote, not necessarily to even to have anything to do with the committee, but we say, we sign off on the project, and let's say they come and ask us for $20 million, and, and we find $20 million. Let's say they come and ask for a billion dollars, and we find a billion dollars, and we're like, yes, let's do it. And we, we sign on the dotted line at that point. My point is, the committee and the commissioners can still do all of the research without subjecting us to this type of exposure. We would be idiots to not insulate ourselves.
So-
You can accomplish the same goal.
Possibly. And, because you can accomplish the same goal in many different ways. But what you're talking about here is, you are trying to stack and create a situation in which governmental, non-governmental, I mean, when you talk about P3 projects, public-private partnerships, this is the epitome of that situation, where you're talking about tax dollars and not, non-tax dollars being contributed to deliver a project. Whenever you have those situations, it is imperative that you have all of your invested parties working together to move that project forward. In order to get all of those people together, you've got to build a coalition and have certain things in place. I think if the position of this council is, I'm not going to give school corporation tax dollars, then you're inherently going to make the school corporation feel like, yeah, I don't want to play in the same sandbox, right? If you go through the process of committing something, creating the commission, and moving forward to getting the project done, then you've got everybody in the same sandbox. And I think possibly a solution for what you're looking at is, okay, create this, allow the commissioners to create this commission, but instead of providing this $100,000, go and enter into an agreement with Baker-Tilly to do the exact thing that needs to be done as a county. Give the commissioners the authority as a contracting entity, appropriate that $100,000 into their contractual services, and allow them then to enter into an agreement with Baker-Tilly, or Reedy Financial, or LWG, whoever you use as your MA, to start doing that study. That way, no money has been technically given over, the commissioners are the ones who create that contract, it is appropriated by this council, and the commissioners hold that contract. Do you have a question?
I was just going to say, and the point of this whole law was to create the transparency, and that just removed all the transparency, because it's then between the commissioners and Baker-Tilly or whoever, this creates transparency for the, for the public, that this whole ordinance, not the ordinance, but the committee formation.
The chapter creates that in the creation of the committee. I think the other thing though is, like we just talked about, that there can be multiple pull ways to get there. I mean, I think you can still get there with the creation of the commission, the appropriation of the dollars to the commissioners, to enter into the agreements that need to be entered into, that information then being provided to the commission for their consideration, and the school corporation then is going to have to deal with those numbers. And whether it be a, you know, a school consultant as to what is truly needed, well, you've got that money appropriated to the commissioners, let them enter into the contract. That contract then is solely with the county that has been reviewed by your legal, to be in sufficient form. And so, you can get that and move the project forward, without giving or funding technically specifically to a project yet. But that committee can still take that information and move forward and move the ball along. I will tell you, I know there's, there's been talk about legal, I don't know that you need a legal at this point. You need to know what money you have, you need to know what you need to satisfy the means, and then you can start thinking about, what delivery method are we going to do, what is the true bonding capacity, that kind of stuff. That's stuff that could come down the road at a later time. But I would tell you, that even that agreement for a bond or things of that nature, wouldn't be with this committee. The committee would not enter into that engagement for that bond. It would be, most likely, the school corporation, because they are sitting on the money that you have transferred to them.
So that eliminates, that, that creates a level of protection that Commissioner, Councilman Ellis was looking for too.
I guess I'm ready for the next one, yeah.
All right.
I swear, I feel like I'm in law school again.
All right, so, I'm going to come back to this conversation, but she touched on transparency. I have failed to ask my brother or any of the other three attorneys, so I'm going to ask you, since you're here and seem to be well-versed. Where in the bill does it require that the, this committee that's set up has to comply with open-door law or Freedom of Information Act?
So in the bill itself, it doesn't, I, I don't believe in the bill, it says that itself, but when you look at the open-door law, so you go back to five, it does say there, any body, committee, commission that is formed by a governing body is subject to the open-door law and Access to Public Records Act.
So is this an extension of the government then, this committee?
It is a subcommittee that is created by a government action.
Okay, and so if there are subcommittee of us, and they go and enter, excuse me, enter into agreement, that would suggest that we are potentially on the hook, at the very minimum, since it says shall pay all expenses, it would imply that we shall, will pay. So once again, I go back to you, the casino has offered them $100,000. They can go set up the same committee. Why would they not go do it? Why, why, why would we, why are we so insistent? And honestly, I'm, this is going to take me back to, you asked if I don't trust this board, or that they would have to be bad actors, or something of that nature, you said earlier, right?
Yep.
All right. Perhaps this isn't something I should say publicly, but I've said a lot publicly, and it comes back on me, and so be it. But, the fact that we keep pushing for this committee to be set up, when we have the ability to set up a committee that insulates us completely, or for the most part, completely, from any type of exposure, the fact that we keep pushing and pushing and pushing to give us a dollar to set up this committee-
We want to utilize the law that was prepared for us, for your county. And for certain taxpayers, we're asking for our-
Okay, great, that's wonderful that you got a law, but it was poorly written. It's poorly written, if it were-
That's your opinion.
What? So why would we not insulate ourselves from liability?
So, I want to make sure that I'm answering the question that you have posed.
Sure.
So, your question is, if, assuming, because again, I have to work on assumptions, because I've not been involved at this level, assuming that the casino is willing to give $100,000 over to an entity that is not this commission, some other entity, to conduct this review, why would you not go down that road? Or why would you not use that as the mechanism to get this constructed? Under the legal construct, it's, you have a statute that creates and basically obligates the school corporation to follow the commission. That does not exist unless you work under that statute.
And I agree with you, but if we are going to assume that people on this committee are not bad actors, I think we can also assume that the school corporation are not bad actors.
Right, and I, I agree with that. And I'm not saying that the school corporation is a bad actor in that. What I was going is back to my example of, the school corporation views it from a certain lens, of what they need to provide to the schools, for their students. And they provided a potential solution. In the school corporation's belief, not as a bad actor whatsoever, that in their mind may be the best-case scenario, and that be the project they move forward with. And there's nothing that you can do to stop them. You want me to stop?
No, I want you to keep going.
Okay. Here, there's a mechanism that mandates, that essentially removes the power from the school corporation to construct exactly what it is that they may want to construct. They have to construct a project that is approved, essentially, by the council, because of the appointments that have been made.
Okay.
Can I, can I just give?
There's been some misrepresentation on what this Casino Foundation is willing to do and what they've been asked to do, so I would like Kristin Craig to come up right now and explain, before we go any further, that.
Thanks, Mark. So I am a member of the Casino Foundation Board, which is the entity that has potentially committed funds towards an eventual school project. They have not been asked to commit that $100,000, so I just wanted to clarify that point. That could be an ask that's made to them at some point, but the Foundation Board has confirmed that they would be willing to potentially invest a majority of their funds over the next 20 to 25 years towards a project as part of this Oversight Board and the process we're talking about this evening. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, real quick follow-up. Who sits on that board with you?
There's five different members, so it's myself, John Collet is here this evening, oh, there he is, as well. Let's see, the other appointments for the commissioners are Terry Conley, as well as Ellie Caldwell. Then the mayor has two appointments, so that is Mike, I'm sorry, that is Kelsey Hankewitz, as well as Mark Blade. And then the casino itself, Churchill Downs, has two appointments, Mike Rich, and Claire, and I can't remember Claire's last name, but she's with CDI Incorporated.
And the majority of those people would vote to, whether or not they want to allocate the $100,000, it would take the majority here- the $100,000, it would take the majority here, how's that work?
Yes, it would take a majority, yes. They have already voted on what I previously mentioned, the commitment of a majority of their funds for the next 20 to 25 years, and that was a unanimous decision.
Okay, so if this committee wanted $100,000, and it seems like it's all the people sitting in this room, or a lot of them, you guys could appropriate the $100,000.
There's actually only two of us in this room this evening.
Well, I'm saying, okay, but I'm saying there's people who have appointed those positions in this room.
Sure, I think it's an ask that can go to them, however, I will say, I don't think I'm speaking out on, too far out of turn on behalf of the board, the commitment was with other entities towards the idea of a larger project. So I think the question would have to be posed to them, I just don't want it to be construed that that's a commitment that's already been made, because it has not.
Would you be in favor of, if they asked for it, would you be in favor of giving them $100,000?
I'm not sure, I'd have to think about that, and see how it aligns with the rest of the project and the creation of this oversight board.
So is the potential you would vote no, that you wouldn't give them $100,000?
It's a part of this creation of this oversight board and establishing a way to create public private partnerships. So it's unfair to consider that in one little piece, you need to consider that overall.
Thank you, appreciate it. Once again, it doesn't, I guess, where does it, where does it say inside the, inside the bill? Where does it stipulate a termination for this committee? In other words, when does the committee end?
I would say when there's no longer any transferred funds or gifts for oversight or management.
How does it dissolve?
I think it's as of nature, just as of right. When there are no more funds, there's nothing for them to, for oversight and management.
How far do you, this may not be a question for you, this might be a question for Mr. Klingonbeard. How far do you believe $100,000 takes this committee?
If you're asking my opinion, and I guess it depends upon what you're, if I'm saying, what can I get for $100,000 towards this project, whether it be this committee, or the commission, or whomever, what can I get for $100,000? I want to make sure I'm answering the question.
So, so let's assume the casino gives them $100,000, and they proceed forward. How long is it before they need to ask for more money?
I don't know, I mean, I think that depends upon what you have, because again, if we are talking about, in the constraints of the statute, okay, where all of their powers are tied to the oversight and management of funds that are transferred, then I think that $100,000 can go an extraordinarily long way. If it's tied to getting an MA and FA to go through their project, yeah, that, you could probably get something for about, I'm guessing I don't do their work, $40,000 to $60,000. If you need to get your work done for the school specialists who consult in what is that you need, I mean, I think that you could probably get that in there as well. And with that information, then you have the information that you need as to size and scope of a potential project. And then also what the county has that it could pledge to a project, what the casino has that it could pledge to a project, what the school corp has that it could pledge to a project, so that you can then truly get a scope and impact to get a project done.
And other entities, and other entities that may be willing to.
Correct. Anybody else who, it's getting those capital stacks.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If you're saying, "How fast can I burn through $100,000 if I don't have restrictions?" I mean, pretty quickly, but again, it has to come back to the oversight and management of funds transferred for a school project.
I'll try to make this my last question. It'll be a short yes or no question, but before I do, I would like to comment to the kids sitting in the first couple rows. Whether you agree with me or disagree with me, or whether you agree with him or disagree with him, I will tell you, this is some of the best education you can get. Sitting here listening to, he's in a hotspot, he's answering questions on the fly without having any notes in front of him. And so he's had to familiarize himself with everything that he's being asked questions about, and so I commend you for coming in and being willing to do that, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
My question for you, my last question, simple yes or no. Is it illegal for the commissioners to take a donation from the casino, should the casino choose to do it, and allow a committee to start researching and finding out, finding solutions? Would that be illegal?
I'm going through everything to try and come up with a yes or no. You've asked me a yes or no question, where yes or no is probably not a great answer, but I can tell you, I cannot think of, so long as a donation is made under the proper pretext, that would make it illegal, as in something that cannot be done, but there's a lot of other things.
Right, as long as they don't break other laws in the process.
Well, and as long as those funds, the biggest thing would be, as long as those funds are used precisely for the purposes in which the Casino Foundation gifts it to the county. You are limited on donations to strictly how they do it. So I can tell you, if the Casino Foundation said, I'm not answering this with a yes or no question. If the Casino Foundation said, "We are going to gift you $100,000, but that $100,000 goes towards a project that is done under the statute," they can't spend a penny of that until the statute is enacted, if that makes sense.
But I thought the statute hinged on money coming from the county.
That's what, that's what I mean. So the county would have to take action to.
I'm not suggesting to form that committee. I'm suggesting, could a committee, not, not the committee that we fund, could a committee legally go try to find a solution for the school corporation? Let's assume it doesn't have anything to do with $100,000. Could a group of us get together and, could we legally go try to find a solution for this?
Oh, yeah. Nothing prevents people from coming up and spitballing and coming up with ideas.
Okay, and that is my question. So it's not illegal, and there's potentially the funding to do it, should the casino not, should the casino not choose to withhold $100,000 from the schools? So the funds are there potentially, the will is there, there are plenty of volunteers that are willing to do this. So my question to the commissioners at this point, why would we not proceed in a way that insulates us from exposure? Chris, would you like to come up?
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much, by the way.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes, sir.
I have met you time and time again.
Yes, sir.
I have listened to everything that you've had to say. You ask why we're so committed to this. I want to ask you right now, why are you so hell-bent on stopping this process before it ever starts?
Councilpeople, you stated clearly that Vigo County should not fund the school corporation. You stated that, and that you are idiots if you agree to fund that. That's the statement on the record tonight.
That is not what I said.
That's what you said. That's exactly what you said.
I said we would be idiots to fund this committee, I did not say that we could not partner, and in fact, if you go back and listen to the video, I actually did say that they could come back and present something in the future, and we could overturn the ordinance that we passed, and still donate whatever amount is appropriate.
Word salad.
Not at all.
Mr. President, tonight, the three commissioners stand here in unison, asking for your help, asking for the community's help, asking to help these kids and our future. It all depends on it. You can either say yes, or you can say no. But you know what? This is, this is, why are you so hell-bent on this? That's what I keep coming back to, there's got to be something else, because I just don't understand it. Now, we're asking for this $100,000, you can vote it up, or you can vote it down. We're not going to give up, and we'll be happy to stay here all night long and answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All we simply want to do is use House Bill 1515. It'd take $100,000 of money that we clearly have in place to help the school corporation get a project off the ground. It may not work, there may be no money, and you guys may decide to vote no at the end of this conversation, on supporting a project, but I can't for the life of me, for my children, for your children, or your grandchildren, understand why we would fight this process. I mean, there is a council member that was so proud of this bill, that took a freaking picture with us on the steps of the State House, and is opposed to it. I mean, we were all there, school board members, commissioners, mayor, and it was a 49 to nothing vote, bipartisan support to move forward. So if you have questions throughout the week, please, Vicki, you come, Brad, you come, Brenda, come to our office and ask some questions, we'll figure it out.
Do you have anybody else?
No, that's our presentation.
Mark, I do have a question for you. May not be for you, I don't know if you can answer it or not, but maybe something more for Dr. Hemsel. If this committee is not formed, I think Jewel touched on it, if this committee is not formed, what's the plan?
I would have to let Dr. Hemsel or someone, or a school board member, answer that question.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak. If I understand your question correctly, what happens if the county council chooses not to move forward? Is that your question? First of all, let me be clear, our preference is to utilize the process that Senator Good worked so hard to get passed for our community. There's a number of reasons why, but the particular person, what do we do going forward? We're committed to modernizing our schools. We're trying to come up with a solution that gets it done quicker, so that more of our students can benefit from this. We believe that if we can work on West Vigo High School and a new high school at the same time, and we can get it started right away, kids that are in eighth grade could benefit before they graduate. I think the last time I spoke, I talked about how we've already had two generations of kids go through with no changes, with no opportunities, and a failure to act could have a third generation of students go through without the opportunities that other communities take for granted. We're going to move forward. With the generosity of the Casino Foundation, we would go to them and ask if that continues to stand, even though the county would choose not to do so. If they communicated to us that they're willing to partner with us in doing so, then we would go back to our school board, and we would go back and take a look at our priorities, and find out what do we do first? Do we continue down the path that we currently have, which is to work on West Vigo High School, and partner, we were hopefully in partnership with the county council on something on the east side? Or should we re-back up and decide that we need to do something on the east side, and delay something on the west side through a referendum process? We don't know the answer to that, but we would have to go back and take a look at it. We know that with the generosity of the community, with the Casino Foundation, it puts us in a position to have a different conversation than we thought we were going to have, that we didn't know we were going to have to have. But we know from the beginning, we can't do all of this alone unless, and generate opportunities for today's kids. If we're prepared to do it alone, it'll just take a lot longer to do so. State law does not permit a school to utilize income tax, or food and beverage tax, or any of those other tax sources that you all have access to. Ours would be property tax only. Anything that we do to modernize our schools would have to come through property tax. As I mentioned in our last county council meeting, it was obvious very early in my tenure here in Vigo County, with a group of farmers who says, "We actually support the idea of modernizing our schools. We would just like to see a plan and an option that does not solely depend on property taxes, but diversifies that tax impact." I communicated with people at the State House, I told them what our situation was, I told them where we were with the school corporation. As I pointed out before, the class of 2013 started their kindergarten careers in 2000. If they had begun in 2000, and we recognized some of the needs that we had at that particular time, which were much fewer in number than they are today, it would have cost about 46% less then, than it is today because of the inflationary aspects and rates. In 2013, when that group of kids was graduating, another group of students was starting in kindergarten. That group of students are today's seniors. That group of students, by that point, we knew of even more issues that were going on with our schools, they were greater in number, and had we addressed them at that particular point in time, it would have cost about 33% less than it will today, because of rates of inflation that have occurred over the past 13 years. What we're asking for today is that generation of kids, they're seniors, we're not going to get anything done in time for them. But today's kindergarten kids are part of the class of 2038, and we think that we can make a significant impact so that those kids can benefit from different educational opportunities that other communities take for granted. We think the fastest way to get there is through a partnership with the county, and part of a partnership is that both of us give and take, and both of us enter into some aspects of risk. We're risking a big part, we're giving up a lot of control, we understand, we think we put together a very responsible plan, it's very thoughtful, we took 18 months to study the situation, it was not come up with over, very quickly, it was thought up over a lot of time with a lot of different information. We're not scared of sharing that information through an oversight board. We welcome the opportunity that the bill provides, because it gives us an opportunity to diversify the tax revenue as requested by the farming community, it gives us an opportunity to have an oversight and have these discussions in a public forum, so that Sue Loughlin and our TV stations and other people can be there, be in the eyes and ears for other members of the community who cannot be there. We've already taken steps to do this. All the information that we've presented, we presented them at our school board meetings. If you didn't see it, you can go back and watch the videos of those meetings that are posted online. We've posted all the information on our website, so you can access it if you've not had an opportunity to do so. We've done facility forums at various locations and times in March, we did additional facility forums at various locations and times in June, and this is where we come up with. It comes down to four goals, aligning with our enrollment, reducing the amount of monies that we need to continue to preventively maintain our schools, so that we don't recreate this situation again 40 or 50 years down the road with a different set of boards and administrators and county councilmen and so forth, to be able to reduce and use our staff more efficiently, so that we can take and address the realities of staffing shortages, as well as ever-changing issues that we have with the state in terms of funding. Since 2008, in the last 17 years, there's been dramatic changes in what we can and cannot do with school corporations in terms of funding projects like this, in terms of paying for our teachers and hiring teachers and doing different things like that. It's a completely different world today in our school funding than it was in 2008. And there's no indication or sign that it's going to change anytime soon. And the fourth opportunity is, let's refocus to what this is really all about. It's to make opportunities for our kids. It's to make sure that our kids have the same opportunities that other communities simply take for granted. We're not asking to build a Taj Mahal, we're asking to build something that's nice, that our students can be proud of, and provides them with the opportunities to be successful adults, and to hopefully choose to stay here in Vigo County and have their kids go through those schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment about this? If you want to come up to the podium, I will, would like to say, is there a sign-up sheet there? Say your name, sign in, say your name and your address, and... Say your name, sign in, say your name and your address, and there won't be questions asked to the council or from the council, and you'll have a three-minute limit.
So, hi, good evening. I am Summer Leggett, a special education teacher with the Vigo County School Corporation.
Can you bring the microphone down in front of you?
Can you hear me now? Summer Leggett, special education teacher with the Vigo County School Corporation. I graduated from Wesvego High School, went to all the Wesvegos a million years ago, 2006 graduate. I don't know what the answer is, but I know the answer is not to do nothing because it is a disservice to my current students, all the other students that I don't have the pleasure of knowing yet, and my own children. My own children, who I don't know if you've seen, cover, he covers his ears when it gets loud. He's autistic, selectively mute. There are so many things that the school corporation could do with additional funding. I don't know the ins and outs. I don't know the rules, but what I do know is it's never a bad idea if we are going to be taxed anyway as citizens because if it comes from the council or if it goes referendum, it's coming from taxes. Regardless, I'm paying for it. I want to see it benefit my children, not 50 years from now and hope for the best. So again, whatever you decide, just think of kids like mine and these sweet kids back here who I can guarantee you have not been coached to say anything.
Hello, my name is Shelby Reed, and these are my babies back here. Not all of them, but I'm so proud of you. I have been a part of the school corporation since 1997, believe it or not. Throughout the years, I have been a student, coach, teacher, and now a parent. I left this town in 2010 to play collegiate volleyball, but came back because I loved this community. I love the education I received here and the people I surrounded myself with, and I wanted to give back to the area that meant so much to me. I coached volleyball at North for eight years until I took a step back in 2022. During my time, you never knew if the gym would be 50 degrees or 85 degrees. A few years ago, we had the privilege to host sectionals, and during this week, our gym was 85 degrees. Parents of visiting schools stood up and screamed expletives while telling us to fix our conditions. Our athletes were mortified. I also coached at a local volleyball club, and we hosted a tournament at one of our high schools. And volunteer parents had to clean up sewage and unclogged toilets during the event due to the outdated cast iron plumbing that runs underneath our schools. That's the impression they get of Terre Haute, sewage. Since then, clubs have backed out of this tournament because who wants to play in a building that's, has sewage? Sorry. This directly ties into when people decide where to settle as well. Who wants to come to a community that cares so little about its schools? They will remember what they saw and what they smelled, and they won't come back. How are we, sorry. For those who ask, why haven't they fixed the plumbing? I answer your question with a question. How are we supposed to do this with students in the building? Before my time is up, I would like to take a moment to commend the students who have so bravely spoken out on their experiences. I hope we can all see their courage and as a community feel a sense of pride in the young individuals Vigo County is raising. These are the people we want to keep in our area. However, we will lose them if we don't take action now and find a way to update these schools. Don't let the sins of our fathers condemn our future because without this oversight committee, we will lose a chance for a real change. And I've heard from students both past and present, they will, they refuse to raise their children in an area where schools are not a priority. Without this committee, you are killing this community, and I hope you can live with that.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Hello, I'm Garrett Hawthorne, and I'm the student council president at Terre Haute North. And first of all, I want to recognize that my title doesn't give me more purpose or more leverage than any other student in the building. I simply just act as a voice for their opinions, and that's what I'm here to do today. I've collected a sample of students' opinions about the schools. The first student I spoke to was concerned on the bathrooms. Bathrooms are a necessity, and compared to other schools, we are lacking. I understand that we don't live in the same area and have the same financial situation as schools such as Avon or Bloomington, but bathrooms are a necessity. Today, I went to use the bathroom on my path to class at a bathroom I frequently use, and it was closed. Talks in class about bathrooms are, that bathrooms are closed. Students have to walk the school to use the bathroom some days and miss out on more class time than necessary. There have been times where multiple bathrooms are closed in the same hallway, causing students to have to walk around to the other side of the school just to relieve themselves. A few minutes of class might not seem productive, but I assure you it is in classes such as math or science. The next student I spoke to mentioned the classrooms and hallways. All the teachers at North have, like, have beat out about windows and want windows. The exterior classrooms are craved like new iPhones when they come out. Students sit in classrooms that are built more to be used as storage. With no windows, the bad AC just makes it hotter, and this is something that should be considered for the new school, outdoor immersive classrooms or even shelters. North has one outdoor learning space, and it's a garden for the botany class. Would some fresh air not be beneficial? Wi-Fi and signal. The last student I talked to mentioned to me that, about the internet and Wi-Fi. This year, we aren't allowed to be on our phones except for lunch, but this hasn't changed the problem of Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi is not a recent technology, and it has already been accepted as being, as online being the future of our learning. How are students supposed to learn online with bad signal? I told one of my teachers today, and this is a true story, that his room has the worst signal in the building that I've been in. He said, he agreed. He said, "It's even worse over there by my desk. His desk is right below the Wi-Fi router." Last year, I had to learn which rooms were good and bad to keep my Wi-Fi turned on and which rooms were better to keep it off. We all know online learning is the future, and it's not going to happen if we can't be online. Thank you for listening to not just my voice, but the students of Terre Haute North.
We understand the Vigo County County Council will be voting on whether or not to fund an oversight committee for the improvement of our schools. If the committee's approved, it would investigate the best methods for the improvement of our school corporation. Anytime the committee would want to go beyond their approved budget, they would have to come before the council and ask. Sounds like the perfect situation, right? A committee that has started to look for the best and cheapest way to improve the state of education with the county. Unfortunately, a majority of the county council members don't seem to think so. This makes us confused. We, the students, understand that the council must handle a federal lawsuit involving the Vigo County Jail, but we also understand that a public body who has to pick between funding the improvement of education or a lawsuit involving criminals should either pick the former or deal with both because we also understand that an efficient council shouldn't be limited to focusing on one problem at a time. We, the students, understand that a question of why us was asked by a council member, and we also understand that another council member answered for the sake of transparency. We, the students, understand that there are many referring to one possible improvement, the construction of a new high school as a mega school due to its perceived large population. We also understand that the population of a new high school, combining Northvego High School and Southvego High School, would be approximately the same size of the populations of the two high schools when they originally founded. We, the students, understand that the argument could be made that the problems within the high schools could be solved by simply moving the population of one school into the other and renovating the vacant of the two. But we also understand that the commute, the commute for some students would take too long, the bus route would start too early, and that a school in need of renovations to that level that our high schools need cannot hold what it used to. The facilities would be incompatible with the combined populations. We, the students, don't understand why a community that is so dead set on fixing its population loss would not jump at the first opportunity to eliminate one of the primary factors of its problems. We, the students, understand that the only way to improve the schools with the current situation without raising property taxes by state law is to approve the appointment of an oversight committee. Lastly, we understand there are some who have called us, who spoke at the meeting last Wednesday, spoiled entitled brats who are coached on what to say. To that, we say this: We are not our parents. All of us are speaking on our own free will, and you're right, we are spoiled. We are spoiled enough to advocate for a school system that we won't see because it has so often been pulled out of our reach. We are spoiled enough to speak before adults about our experiences walking through sewage, freezing in classrooms, and inhaling mold. Citizens of Vigo County and members of the county council, we are spoiled enough to trust you will do what's right and best for the community, the schools, and the younger generations that are thus beginning their academic journeys. Furthermore, Councilman Ellis, our schools are not a hot potato, and you can't shed responsibility onto another public agency out of fear. Stop the stagnation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zion Ogundare, and before I begin my speech, I have to read for a friend because she wasn't able to make it today. Hello, my name is Regan Copeland. I'm a junior at Terre Haute North. I beg all who are listening not to take my absence as a lack of care or passion. I promise you that is not the case. Sadly, I had prior commitments, and because of this, I was unable to attend the meeting tonight. There are many who think this is not an issue I should be concerning myself with. They ask me why I even care, for it will not affect me, but I think back to the generation before me. How if someone had cared, then we would not be in such a position. But I am not here to point fingers. I am here to remind you that a great opportunity lies at your feet. A plan that should make everyone happy stands before us. The proposal does not ask for taxpayer money. We have the $100,000 that we need, and the county council will have input over the spending, yet you still openly dismiss this proposal. I am very active within the community. I am in NHS, robotics, counterpoints, and cheer, along with other activities. I surround myself with good and smart people. These people all have different dreams and aspirations, but one thing they seem to all have in common is the burning desire to leave Terre Haute. I myself am also one of these people. I love my family and the community of Terre Haute, but if I want to succeed in my goals, I cannot stay here unless there is a change. Terre Haute is running out of time. Life is being sucked out of the town. Schools are only getting more expensive to build, and the schools we have now are getting older. Job opportunities continue to pass Terre Haute by. If we do not act now, Terre Haute will suffer. So listen to my plea. County council members, you may not like this proposal, but this is the best solution we have at the moment, and there is no time left to ponder other possibilities. Please invest in the future of Terre Haute's youth as well as the future of Terre Haute itself. Now I will read from my own prepared. Good evening. My name is Zion Ogundare, and I am a sophomore at Terre Haute North High School. Before I begin, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity for me to speak, and thank you to those here today to share about how you feel, whatever your opinion. I came here with, I came to a place, to a meeting like this with my peers last week to speak on how I felt a need for the new school plan to go into effect and was met with some strife on adults, on, by adults on social media. Some people of Terre Haute are understandably angry or weary towards this plan, and I understand why they feel that way. A change this big is frightening, especially when you place trust in people who have let you down before, but I'm afraid we're running out of options. Terre Haute, the students of the city deserve schools that are up to par. Our facilities are behind our time and cannot effectively keep up with the students in our schools. Pieces of the ceiling's breaking, mold in the air, and sewage filling onto the floor is embarrassing and inexcusable. How can the adults of this county expect us to want to stay here? How can the adults expect us to want to raise our kids here or even come back here after we explore education? Stop stalling, stop calling us spoiled, and acknowledge our concerns.
Zion, thank you. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Alan Nurse. I just got to this meeting a little bit ago. I didn't expect to speak, but this has really moved me. I came to this meeting with no prior information of any of the council members or their standings on the proposal. While I've been here tonight, I've watched the same member attack the speakers instead of their arguments and sit on his phone while people speak. Look at the turnout of this meeting. I've counted over 15 of my classmates here tonight. We want you to hear us. I don't have much to say except that I wish that I could have school pride. I've seen so many of my cousins that go to Carmel High School have amazing school pride. They wear their Letterman jacket every day. But since arriving at North, I've really struggled to challenge myself academically. Our school population is too small to offer the classes that I've been wanting to take since freshman year. I remember seeing student work for AP art at other high schools and crying because I was so upset about how difficult it is to have the same opportunities in Terre Haute. I've looked online. For me to take this class outside of a high school, it's $2,500. This is an opportunity to allow your community's children to maximize their potential and to provide Terre Haute with a name. This is an opportunity to open your ears to what the actual people attending this school have to say. Their opinions all seem pretty unified, so I don't understand why you can't unify yours.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Henry Connor, and I'm a junior at Terre Haute North. On Friday, a peer of mine at lunch brought up the issue of new schools. He thinks, rightly so, that we need new schools because of the condition that our schools are in. Another one at the lunch table responded, "Who cares? Why would anyone want to stay in Terre Haute? We care. Look at the turnout. We all care." The youth of Vigo County spend 12 years in the school system before they go off to college or trades or into the workforce. They have 12 years to decide that they want to stay in Terre Haute. The buildings that they spend seven and a half hours a day in reflect the care of this county for the youth. If the county cannot care for the youth of this community by simply providing an adequate learning environment, why would anyone expect a youth to stay in this county? Please, I beg you, show the youth that you care for them in this community. Show them that you're looking forward to a brighter future in this county, instead of sitting idly by and doing nothing and watching the sun set on Vigo County. Show them that you're on this county council for a reason, because you love this community and you want it to prosper. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ben Caddick. My brother's Clark Caddick. We're twins, believe it or not. I'm here today bringing many people's testimonies with me, which of we have our three future valedictorians. As of right now, all of the schools are too small to be competitive in anything, either academic or sports related. If a new school was to be created, we would get the best of both worlds with the best teachers and the best athletes all coming together to provide a good education for the kids. Jack Foster, senior. Our school facilities are much too dilapidated to continue running how we are. Every day, students come to class, oftentimes ill, likely due to the school atmosphere. We understand that this is a big ask, but for the future generations, we consider this as a top priority, not just for our schools, but for our community in general. Claire Bennett, senior at North. As of right now, our own superintendent is waiting for that call that our schools have been, that have to be shut down. What will we do when this happens? The thing is, there isn't a plan, and not one perfect plan exists for us. Even though it will not affect our generation, the next will be failed by our school system if a change is not made. All of us present within these buildings are aware of this. It's time the people in control of these changes that can be made with this plan wake up to the disservice the school and programs are providing to us students, especially in comparison to those around us. Lucy Wessel, senior at North. As a freshman, I read our class catalog and was so excited to take AP classes in subjects, in subjects like statistics, computer science, and physics. However, we do not have the class sizes to include all these AP subjects at any school, and we are falling behind other schools across the state. I am fortunate enough to be able to supplement my coursework with classes through Rose Holman and Ivy Tech, but many of my friends do not have such opportunities. I also know several teachers whose AP classes were cut due to insignificant enrollment. Both students and teachers would benefit from a combined school where students could challenge themselves and, challenge themselves and teachers could teach the subjects that they love. Katie Henthorn, senior at Terre Haute North, which is here today. I moved to Terre Haute nearly 10 years ago, and in that time, I have grown to love this, to love this city. The friends I've made here and the opportunities I have been given, despite this, I have no intention of returning to Terre Haute after college because I refuse to put my future children through the schools that are frankly... children through the schools that are frankly unfit for students to spend upwards of 30 hours a week in. This is the reality of many of my peers are, this is the reality many of my peers are being forced to face as we reflect on the circumstances we have endured to simply obtain a public education. If the council's concern is our city's economy, the solution is not pushing out the next generation of our community's workers. Lucy Ellis.
Mr. Kattick, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rick Berger. I had a script, but I'm going to go to bullet points. Everyone's getting tired, I know. But I, I chose to be here tonight and I will be the voice of many people. I represent a parent, a grandparent, taxpayer, a school board member. So let's get to my bullet points. Nine years ago, I served in the position where you are today. I understand your responsibilities truly, and budgets. Last week, Earl Elliott, a good friend and a great CPA, shared financial numbers. I respect and support what he's given. We have an opportunity as a community to work together for our kids and our community. I'm not asking for an open checkbook, but a way to work together to invest in this community. I've lived here 24 years, and I want to stay here. Accountability, transparency, open communication, we have been as a school board, and I promise you, we will be there. We are a new school board. Hear that, and you all know that. We have a new leader, a great superintendent. Trust us, we ask you to give us a chance to build that partnership with everybody. We, the Vigo County School Corporation, as Dr. Hemsel said, 18 months, we've worked on this. 18 months, it's not three months, it's not four months, and you all know that, but I want people to hear that. It's a good plan, eight to 10 years probably. Working with professionals to review each building, do they have the bones to do it? We've got to close schools, we've already been transparent about that. We don't need all these buildings. We've conducted open forums, I've been very disappointed for people not coming out there, I'll say that publicly. Whether we've arrived here from different perspectives or different experiences, we are here now, united by a belief that our students, thank you for being here, deserve modern, safe, inspiring schools. The Oversight Committee is not a sign of weakness. It is a sign of maturity, teamwork, and shared responsibilities. Tonight is not winning or losing, it's not politics. It's about students, the future, and the county. And I would just end on this, this goes a little bit, this community's so divided right now, and it hurts. But I met an, I was in a restaurant many months ago, just finishing up breakfast with a friend, and this, we just, I was getting up, this 92-year-old veteran says, "You got a minute?" I said, "Yes, sir." He had a hat on. He says, "Remember, you always have a choice. We all do." He says, "I'm going to give you six words, or really 12 words, and you can pick what you want to choose here every time, negativity or positivity, enemies, friends."
Rick.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate it. No, that's good. Thanks.
Good evening, President Thompson and council members. My name is Susan Turner, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of the Terre Haute Children's Museum. And while I love my job, I'm hopelessly in love with my family. My husband Isaac started teaching 12 years ago at South Vermillion High School. 10 years ago, he was offered the opportunity to work in our community and teach at Terre Haute North. For the last decade, he's taught physics and chemistry to local high school students, some of these people right here. He has served as a science bowl coach and the Area 5188 Robotics Team Supervisor. Two weeks ago, he accepted a new position in the corporation as a STEM coach for the 6th through 12th grade. While I'm sad he'll be leaving the classroom, I'm thrilled that he will no longer be subjected to 85-degree classrooms and bathrooms that don't work. He is a highly-trained professional with multiple degrees. He deserves to teach in a space that's worthy of his skill set. And I brought pictures. Eight years ago, Isaac and I were blessed to adopt our son, Max. He is a smart, curious, funny boy who has never met a stranger. At his adoption hearing all those years ago, the judge asked us a simple question. He asked us if we would do our best to raise Max and give him every opportunity possible. That's why I'm here tonight. I see it as my job as Max's mom to advocate for him and his friends. As a second grader at Lost Creek Elementary, he has it pretty good, but I know that the time is coming when he realizes that our community hasn't invested in their schools and that those students have more access than he does. Max deserves the absolute best. All of our kids do. Please know, I'm not asking you to build the Taj Mahal. I'm asking you to open a meaningful and collaborative relationship, one that has been made possible by state legislature, a relationship that is supported by the school board, the mayor, the commissioners, the business community, and higher education, and ultimately, one where you control the purse strings. We have been given a gift by the state legislature to explore other funding options. The entire state is watching how we handle this opportunity. I sincerely hope you decide to vote in favor of the ordinance. I'm past pointing fingers at who is responsible for how we got here. It's time to come together as a community to fix these buildings for our children and the teachers who choose to teach in this corporation. And one more piece of advice, for all of those in the room and everyone who's watching online, please be careful what you're saying on social media and around the dinner table because your kids are always watching you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Thompson, council members, commissioners, members of the general public that are present in person or on YouTube, including Mr. Gentry. My name is Earl Elliott. I'm a certified public accountant. I've worked at Sacre d'Or and Company since 1981. I was a member of the Terre Haute City Council from 2016 through 2023. I will address two issues related to the commissioner's request for $100,000 of funding from the casino distributions for this Oversight Committee to retain the accounting and legal expertise he will need to perform its duties. The first issue is, can the county afford the $100,000? Well, absolutely. You know that. If you don't think you can, then maybe we ought to meet and review the 123124 cash and investment balance report, and I can explain that one to you. Casino distribution receipts will increase from $600,000 to $1,500,000 per year in 2025 and beyond. This ask is for just $100,000 of this $900,000 increase. This $100,000 should not be needed for employee salaries or be stored in some rat hole. It's readily available. The second issue is, when the time comes, will the county council approve it and support all the stakeholders who will benefit from the Oversight Committee's unbiased, detailed, transparent work to vet and challenge the school corporation's plan to build a new high school and renovate many other school buildings? The Oversight Committee will also address the funding of the plan. I expect this will include seeking public-private partnership funds and other funds to minimize the amount of property taxes that may be needed to fund the plan. So who are all the stakeholders as we hopefully head down this path? The Indiana State Senate, who provided the template? Senator Good told us last week the Senate approved this process 49 to 0 for Vigo County to implement as a test case. Our current and future Vigo County students and their parents. Our teachers, our school administrators, our school board, our business community who needs our schools to produce well-educated students for them to hire and needs good schools to attract employees to Vigo County. Our business development efforts will benefit greatly from new and renovated schools.
Earl, that was me, right in front of you. Thank you, sorry.
Huh?
Sorry.
Well, I, I'm about done, okay? Let me just skip, let me just skip to the close. I didn't realize it was being timed.
Three minutes.
Okay, but I didn't see a big clock counting it down like I saw last week. The council, the council can vote yes and approve the $100,000 additional appropriation. The Oversight Committee can be formed and start working under the watchful eyes of whomever is motivated to watch. Or the council can vote no and tell the community, the State House, and all the stakeholders I have identified, plus the ones I did not, to stick it in your ear, we're going to keep our $100,000. Yeah, that's what you'll be doing, stick it in our ear. If you're inclined to vote no, just consider that votes have consequences and vote in the best interest of your constituents, not the community's pocketbook. And I'll, I'll reduce next week's by 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Olivia Cordray. I'm a junior at Terre Haute North, and I first want to thank all the council members who have shown up, you know, in person. You've shown us the respect that you are willing to listen. Time and time again, I've heard my peers and myself express disgust at the schools, but I think this has been addressed more than enough. So I want to bring attention to another issue. These buildings don't have the adequate classrooms for the classes that they offer. My orchestra program, we excel, but we don't have a classroom. We meet on the stage every day, and every day we tear down our classroom. We put the chairs and stands and the whiteboards, we push them to the side so that the clubs that meet in the auditorium can use that space. And every morning, we set it back up again. There are times where we are shunted from classroom to classroom because they don't have a space for us. We have ended up in the teacher's lounge for classes before because they don't have anywhere for us. My family has stayed in Terre Haute for generations. My paternal grandparents moved here in the 80s to raise their children. My father went to the same high school that I'm attending now with no changes. My maternal grandparents have been here for even longer than that. But I will leave this town. I don't want to stay. Nothing about the school shows that anybody cares. I have no desire to send my children to a school that I attended. I have no pride for my school either. And I don't want to stay in a town that's killing itself with closed-mindedness and lack of, like, lack of open ideas. Nobody deserves to go to a school that screams, "You don't matter. You're not worth it." How can the people that stay in the town create a better town if their school buildings tell them that every day that they walk through the doors? You might be questioning my motives for speaking. I promise, I'm not coached. I wasn't hand-selected. Nobody has told me anything other than a friend that I called who lives in Indianapolis. I am here because I want better for the students that come before me, because if I chose to stay here, I want better for my own children. Vigo County has a unique opportunity to fix our, okay.
Sorry.
Hi, my name's Bill Han, I'm a local business owner, been a resident of Vigo County for 35 years. I'm going to be brief, so you can have some of my Tom Earl. I think what we all agree on is that we can do better for our kids, we can do better for our teachers, we can do better for our schools. It's how we get there. What I'm asking you is to be bold leaders. Don't operate out of fear. Fear will paralyze everybody, and it's how we are where we are. So I'm asking you to take the steps forward with the House bill that's been put forth in front of us so that we don't operate in fear and lose another outstanding school superintendent, the last one left because he hit the wall, and he's gone. This man has put in good work, great work for our kids. He has a plan, and I'm asking you to be bold leaders. Thank you.
My kids graduated from North. My oldest grandson will be going to North next year. I hate to hear it's gotten in such bad shape, and I, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't agree we don't have to do something. I'd like to know, you know, what that's going to be, like to find out. But what I'd really like to find out is, I've only been to two meetings, like, I've worked swing shift all my life, and now I've got time to where I can start coming and seeing what's going on, where my money's going, where everybody's money's going. On one hand, I'm hearing, we got barely enough money to pay our bills. The first week I came, it was all tight budget, the jails overfilled. Now I'm hearing we got plenty of money. The meeting at South, hell, it sounds like we're sitting on, what was it, 1, 1,41, $147 million? Why did I get a tax increase? Why was my property taxes raised? If that's the case. And even that, that's not going to pay for no school, no new big school. All I got to do is, everybody's got them, we got them, I don't have mine with me. That amazing new little phone, you can get on there, and you can see how big a school we're going to need. All you got to do is punch that in, and about $700 a square foot is going to give you a rough idea about how much it costs to build a school. There may be some construction people in here that might beg to differ with me. It may be 750, I don't know. All I'd like to know is where we're going to come up with the money, besides raising my taxes and all the other seniors in town. And if there is money out there, I mean, let's hear about it, bring it forward. I'd like for the committee, you know, next time I come, to have some of that information. And like I said, I, I mean, these kids, all, everybody in here, I think we're all on board, we need to do something. But I want to make sure we can pay for it. That's what I'd like to know. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ava Stevens. I'm here today speaking on two graduate students that can't be here today, Eliana Chu and Gavin Wessel. Hi, I'm Eliana Chu. I graduated from Terre Haute North High School last May. I currently go to Indiana University Bloomington. I wish I could be there in person, but I didn't realize that they were voting on the issue until today. I attended Lost Creek Elementary's, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and Terre Haute North. I enjoyed my time attending these schools, but when I had the opportunity to visit other schools in different areas of Indiana, while on the school volleyball team, I realized that my county was not enough. It didn't even compare. These other school facilities were modern and their spaces were beautiful. These other school facilities were modern and their spaces were beautiful, while my own, back at home, was outdated and one might say neglected. The Terre Haute North volleyball team has hosted tournaments at our school, and I've had past teammates from my travel volleyball team that go to Avon, Plainfield, Brownsburg, et cetera, that have said our school looks like a dungeon on the inside. I believe the facilities have a big effect on how a child learns. How are kids supposed to keep up with 21st century learning standards when we aren't even provided the infrastructure to match that? If I were to have children in the future and Vigo County's facilities stayed the same as they are now, they would most definitely not be attending any Vigo County schools. That doesn't have anything to do with the education we are getting, because our teachers are amazing. But there is only so much that they can do to replace the lack of investment in our county's schools. It sends a message to all the students in Vigo County that funding their future is an priority for you. Funding our schools would provide facilities that children actually want to be at, and it would help restore the pride that many don't have. Our students deserve the investment in their education because in the end, you're holding them back from their full potential, and nobody wants that from their own child. So if you want students to bring their children back in the future, invest in them now. And from Gavin Wessel, denying our children access to modern, well-equipped school is not only a policy failure, but a moral defeat. In a world driven by innovation, where technology shapes every aspect of our lives, our schools have to evolve in order to prepare students for the challenges and opportunities of tomorrow. Outdated classrooms and obsolete curricula rob kids of the tools they need to thrive. Kids deserve learning environments that inspire and foster creative, creativity and curiosity. To withhold advantages in education for our youth is to knowingly limit the generation to compete, contribute, and succeed. We owe it to the future of our communities to invest in education that reflects the world they are growing into. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the extent of the signup list.
That is?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else here you want to speak?
Hello, council members. My name is Alex Allen Hodge. I'm a parent to two Terre Haute North students. I'm a business owner with my partner in the back, and I am the president of the Vigo County Education Foundation. We are not connected to the school corporation, we are our own entity. We support our teachers, our students, in many ways, and I'm the vice president of the Terre Haute Children's Museum. So kids, youth are in my heart. So I'm here, speaking on many ways, and so this just transpired as I was listening to folks and listening to everybody here tonight. So my written remarks are, Councilman Ellis has stated tonight that he doesn't want to give the school corporation any funds. That's his prerogative. It does seem to answer the question as to why are you so against this committee? However, my focus is on the remaining six council members. Your county has come to the table. We've answered your questions, some over and over. We're here to work with you collaboratively and with you being an entity leading the way. Here's what we all know. Reasonable people know something must be done with our school corporation. Two, people don't want tax increases. Three, people voted against a referendum, making it a non-starter. This is a legal way for the county to provide funds to support the school corporation and come to the table to find the solution. So my question is, or my statement, my question is to the six other folks is, can you come to the table? And generally, please don't walk away from the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good afternoon, council members. I apologize if my voice is shaky. My name is Mackenzie Johnson. I've been a resident of Vigo County most of my life. I moved away for seven years. I attended Sugar Grove Elementary School, Sarah Scott Middle School, South High School, and West Vigo High School. So I have been in the environments that you are addressing. I want to address a few statistics before I begin any further. In 2024, Vigo County poverty rate was at 20.03% with a per capita income of $41,373 and a median household income of $52,525. In 2024, a point-in-time count in Vigo County revealed an estimated 260 to 290 people were experiencing homelessness, a significant increase from the previous year. The 2024 Indiana PIT count recorded 4,854 people experiencing homelessness statewide. In 2024, Vigo County, Indiana faced significant food insecurity challenges. Nearly 1 in 3 senior students are chronically absent statewide. Specifically, in Vigo County, the statistic was the same. Vigo County has a high school dropout rate that is higher than the state average with the 2024 high school graduation rate of 84.7% compared to Indiana's 2024 rate of 90.23, so below the state average. The unemployment rate of 4.2% in 2025. I want you to think on these points, and I want you to think of how these things happen. It is the community and the people that we invest in. If we do not value our children, our children do not value themselves. I am a mother, I have two daughters, a 10-month-old and a two-year-old. I moved away for seven years to a county that is deemed much worse than this one, Lake County, and I will say that my family and I thrived there. This was a community that I did feel safe in, even given the fear tactics that have been said about Gary and Maryville and other entities within Lake County. The municipalities that are here in Vigo County are giving you everything that you need. The resources are available, the people are available, and I ask, what will you do to change these statistics? Why do you not care? You will long be gone and people will still be affected. I am one of these people. I grew up in poverty. I did not have as many opportunities as other people, and I've done everything that I can to get above them. I did not belong to a family with a name. I still don't. And I would hope that you would understand that the community that is made up here are people who do not have a name, who do not have an identity and fall within these statistics. Please care a little more about the people who will come after you, because one day you will not be here.
Thank you.
It's three minutes, right?
Three minutes.
I'm so hungry right now, I really am. And I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, 'cause I just, I get emotional about it. You got one of the most respected CPAs in the state of Indiana telling you there's money available. I don't know if there is or not, but the guy's got a heck of a track record. You know, we got a choice. All of, every one of you have said you want to help our schools. You have access to tax dollars that school corporation does not. You have the ability to change the trajectory of our county for future generations. We got a lawsuit pending for the jail, right? You can build a new jail, or you can be bold and you can make decisions and build a school instead of a jail. Please, please, please do that. Let the Oversight Committee look and see if all these things are true. Steve's thrown out a plan for building the schools, maybe it's a good one. The superintendent has one, they spent 18 months looking at, maybe it's a good one. But if there's one county that deserves an Oversight Board, it's Vigo County. And Oversight is what we need, and the very fact that we're arguing and fighting over a committee to give us an impartial, made of so many disparate parties, on a committee to overlook it, baffles me. Please be bold, do it, change your mind, one of you, please, and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. None. Take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's adjourned.
You guys have one paper signed.
No.